Councilor, your life.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the work session. Today is Tuesday, October 14th. It's approximately 1:00 PM. I am Mayor Eric Enriquez. We will start with a moment of silence for the brave men and women of the United States Armed Forces as they protect our interests around the globe, as well as our courageous men and women of the Las Cruces Police, Las Cruces Fire Department. If you join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first thing we'll start out with is Pets of the Week. Carol, if you want to come up?
Thank you. I'm Carol Nelson, Digital Content Specialist with the Animal Services Center of the Mesia Valley. This week, our Dog of the Week is Hulu 89471. To look her up on the website. From the moment I wake up, I'm ready to share love and cuddles with my humans. Once I feel safe, my sweet and playful nature shines bright. I've been practicing my leash manners, and I love checking in with my humans during our walks. I'm also learning to keep all four paws on the ground and how to sit, and I am making fantastic progress. And my athletic ability to leap over objects is quite a sight. If you're looking for a loyal companion who enjoys walks, cuddles, pets, and tasty treats, I'm the pup for you. And this week, we actually don't have a cat of the week because the one we selected got adopted before we could even promote her. So it's a good problem to have. And as always, we like to highlight our long-term residents. Just as a reminder, the longer they stay at the center, it's harder for them to thrive. So we would love for them to get out sooner rather than later. Cosette has now been with us 280 days, Cookies and Cream 270 days, Dexter 265, Finn 255. I've spent time with all of these dogs. They're really great options for adoptable pets. And our upcoming events this weekend, we will be at Pet Co. from 9:00 to 12:00, so definitely come by. And then prepare for our drive-through vaccine clinic at the end of the month. We will be at the Field of Dreams parking lot, October 26th, that is a Sunday, and we'll be there from 9:00 to 1:00 doing microchips and low-cost and free vaccines. So definitely come on by. And as always, feel free to check out our website or our social media for more information, and you can also reach out to the center. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Carol. Next is Agenda Item 2.1, Addressing Housing Insecurity and Exploring Alternative Living Options. Natalie Green.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Natalie Green, your Housing Administrator for the record. Today, we are doing a presentation on some of the discussion items requested by council at the August 4th council meeting. It'll cover housing insecurity and then exploring some alternative housing options. With that, I'd like to introduce Jen Lopez with Project Moxie. It's the consultant that we've engaged to support us in this work.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council. It's so nice to be with you again. And for some of you, I'm new to you, and you're new to me. So I'm excited to learn more about you and your interests and how we can support you in this very important mission of serving those who are unhoused. I'd like to tell you a little bit about me for folks who don't know our work. I am Jen Lopez. I've been doing affordable housing and homelessness work for 25 years. I am a graduate of UNM. Don't run me out of the room. But I think it's important to know that a lot of the work in the beginning was really driven by New Mexico models. And so I always welcome coming back to New Mexico because I'm currently a resident of Durango, Colorado. We have a small consulting firm. There's a few other folks that were involved in this project, and we're on calls, Josie Butler and Sarah Manji. And we partnered with Scott Shields with Soul Mining, consulting firm that has... Scott has a ton of experience with operating across the continuum in a region in Denver to help families who are unhoused and youth aging out of foster care. So he's always a great partner. And so that's a little bit about us. Is it just a click? Oh, jeez. I will say a couple more things. We... This is hard work. And again, we've been blessed to be able to work in New Mexico. We've been working in Las Cruces since 2017, 18, we met. And it's always a pleasure to come back. We also work in Tahoe, Santa Fe County, Albuquerque. We work with Department of Finance and Administration and the Office of Housing. So again, I think we are not experts on your community, but I think we bring some interesting perspective. The last thing I'll say is we've learned a lot, and we've done some really great stuff, and we've also made mistakes. We'd like to help you avoid them. So that's part of our mission as a consulting firm is to help communities not have to go through the pain points we've had to go through. We have a lot to cover in this agenda. I do talk fast. My apologies. At any time, if you have a question, you can, you know, interrupt. And it might be more efficient, Mr. Mayor, if we hold questions to the end, maybe. Okay, we'll do that. It's a lot of information to try to convey as a sort of level-setting session around what we heard from folks that our team interviewed about the issues around homelessness, as well as talking about what is happening, happening post-COVID in housing markets, in the federal government and housing policy, and being aware of what's happening so that as you think about potential solutions moving forward, you have that back context, which is really challenging and really important right now. We also always do a quick refresh on best practices. We know how to end homelessness as a country. We just haven't had the political will to fund it to the level, but we know how to do it. So again, the issue isn't how, the issue is how much, and we haven't had the support to get those funds. A lot of communities like to have some kind of framework to be able to make decisions. So we'll talk about and give you some ideas around a potential framework for future investments. And again, we'll talk about the current funding environment. We'll dabble a little bit and introduce the concepts of crisis response versus permanent housing models, how those are funded, and when you do which. We'll talk a little bit about cost, cost to these different models and sort of the challenges and opportunities we see in those models. And then we'll suggest some potential next steps for consideration. So we want to start with the interviews. So again, these are high-level themes that we heard. There were seven, eight electeds and leadership from the city that were interviewed. Again, homelessness is a societal problem that Las Cruces needs to address for the health and quality of life for unhoused individuals, number one, and the health and safety of the community. Acknowledging that there's tension between addressing public nuisance concerns and supporting unhoused people. This is not an uncommon theme we see in a number of communities we're in right now. Community-based providers and the city team are important assets. They're effective partners in their stretch to capacity. I am so glad to see my friend Nicole Martinez here. I have been calling Nicole since 2017 for advice. She actually helped me set up the Safe Outdoor Space Program in Colorado during COVID and also came to Durango right before COVID and tried to help me do it in my own community. So you have some incredible talent here, as well as Natalie Green. And you have other service providers that I know are here in the room that want to be part of the solution. There's a sense that came out in the interviews that residents are fatigued with the issue of homelessness. They don't want to see people experiencing homelessness, you know, on the streets, struggling. And despite efforts and great progress, it feels like it isn't enough or that we're not adequately meeting the city's needs. So those, again, are just themes from the interviews. Acknowledging housing is the primary homelessness solution, and it's a social determinant of individual and community health. Las Cruces is, to that point, you all adopted an investment strategy in 2024 that guided up geo-bonds and other funding, and you were trying to leverage as many new housing affordable units as you possibly could. Very impressive. And you still have a shortage of probably 5,000 units. I am going to tell a little vignette because it's very powerful. Natalie wanted me to see Padrina. We went over there and we're touring, and somebody was walking up the stairs, and it was a gentleman that had been sleeping in his car and in the parks. And Natalie's like, "You're housed." I mean, that is what this is all about, right? So again, you're doing some really great work here. Other themes, I love this. It's really important to be clear on what role the city plays in this work if you want to be really effective with limited resources. So folks told us that you're a convener and an investor in solutions, not a direct service provider, and that some primary populations that need help are seniors, people with severe and persistent mental health challenges, people with substance abuse challenges, domestic violence survivors. More from the interviews, identify gaps, obtaining accurate data, demonstrating collective impact, system coordination, clear framework and direction. And then kind of the big point of this work session, I think, is that there is a lack of consensus on additional solutions to supplement current efforts. And if there's a need or how you would go about developing new initiatives. And two are on this slide, tiny homes and accessory dwelling units, because those came up in the interviews. But we do want to talk about, we always want to ground these conversations in the data we do have. And I will say that homelessness data is really hard to use if you're not a homeless service provider. It's complicated data, but that doesn't mean it doesn't exist. It just usually means that it's not been disseminated in a way that other people can understand it. Having said that, in 2025 point-in-time counts, you've got about 267 folks experiencing homelessness. This data is coming from Mesia Valley, Nicole's shop. And then you, at the same time, have about 800 units of affordable housing anticipated to come online in the next years. That's a lot of production. That's a big number, right? So I think you can start to really put those things together. Again, Mesia Valley Community of Hope housed 1,857 people, served that number of people in the past year. And they've got great data on their programs and their outcomes. We put them in the white paper, but it's also on their website. And there was about 194 folks that went through Camp Hope while they waited to transition into stable housing. We did not have the opportunity, this has been a very quick engagement, about six weeks, to gather data from other providers, but would welcome that data and see a way for the city to kind of coalesce data from different providers and put it out in a form that would explain what you're working on. National and state context. These are lots of data points. I'm going to focus on the one that I think is, two that are most powerful. And maybe I'll also give a caveat. So we have had a housing shortage in this country since the Great Recession in 2009. We have not caught up on production, right? We all know this, and we all feel it differently in our local communities. It shows up differently. And then we had COVID, and COVID also put us back in terms of production. And so a lot of communities are still trying to recover from COVID, right? I mean, we saw the cost of construction of housing go up 40% during COVID, and we weren't able to do that much typically, right? So it's a really challenging time. How that shows up is that you see, I'm going to go with that last bullet. In New Mexico, 76% of renters that make less than $50,000 are cost burden. The majority of renters in New Mexico making less than $50,000 are probably living paycheck to paycheck. My point is, we've probably never been in a worse situation unless you go to the Great Depression, right? So we are in really precarious times. I'm a very optimistic person, but my job today is really to put some reality on all these conversations because it's going to get worse, and I'm going to explain why. This is again, we talked about the point-in-time count. There was a 20% increase from 23 to 24. And we know that's an undercount. Housing New Mexico, a lot of folks don't know, actually also provide funding for a match for the continuum of care for homeless programs, and they have their own documents and their own data. And they're saying they think it's probably closer to 19,000 to 20,000 New Mexicans are experiencing homelessness currently. So these are big numbers. Your own affordable housing strategy you adopted last year, again, called out the need for about 5,600 affordable units. So costs are higher. People are feeling the pinch. We have every reason to believe the numbers are already indicating homelessness is going to increase. And then the federal government changes a lot of its programs, its budgets, and it's happening so rapid-fire. I'm paid to do this for a living, and I can't keep up with it. So it, and my biggest fear is that this stuff falls back on local governments, and you all have enough to do. So we want to try to give you some words of advice and ways to think about this. So we're in the federal government shutdown. You're probably already all feeling the impacts of that. The administration and Congress are cutting SNAP. They're cutting Medicaid. They're threatening HUD vouchers, which are probably one of the most popular programs out there and currently already underfunded. And then when they're not cutting programs, they're shifting how they can be used. And a lot of their addendums to their grants are very challenging at best, and communities are not feeling like they can sign on. So again, we're moving into an era where the federal government, which was the main way that we funded homeless programs in this country and housing programs, is backing out of these programs. Does anybody want to guess how much continuum of care funding comes to New Mexico every year? 17 million. When Nicole comes to speak later, I hope she talks about how much of her budget is continuum of care versus you all, because this is what we need to start planning for. Again, we know how to solve the issues. We know how to address homelessness. And you've already got a pretty robust infrastructure in Las Cruces and Dona Anna County. There are a few gaps. We have some slides. If we have time, we can show you or ask Nicole to walk you through like what we have and what we have gaps around still. But I just want to remind that in times of crisis with limited resources, we always start with what we know works. So rent assistance, eviction prevention, hugely powerful. I don't know how much funding is coming to... I don't know how much you all are funding these interventions, but these are very low-cost interventions, and they keep people in their house, in their current houses. Again, you have a pretty robust strategy of creating affordable housing. This bullet, increasing inventory of deeply affordable, means not just affordable housing, but we got to have more vouchers as well, right? So our lowest-income households still need a little rent assistance, even if they get into some of our affordable properties. Again, tracking success using data from HMIS. I'm sure that Nicole's got tons of data. I think other providers may or may not be using HMIS based on whether they are required to with HUD. And I just want to say this, our providers are working so hard right now to do all these things, and they're usually not funded for data collection. So, you know, like, just saying if we want to have access to data, sometimes we have to fund it differently and be able to do things with it. It's also a barrier for new providers getting in and wanting to use the system, right? It costs money and staff to be able to do that. And then, again, most of our communities we're working with right now, we're focusing them on the funding that is available right now so that they can leverage their dollars, right? Does anybody want to guess the one program that got a raise this year from Congress? There was one program that actually got more money. Does anybody want to guess? Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program and Private Activity Bond Models. Those got a raise. I know that they are not always very popular because they're very complicated programs, but that is where the money is right now. And so, you know, we are telling a lot of our communities, "Make sure you're maximizing that because it's there." Doesn't mean it's going to solve all your problems. It's not, but just make sure you're maximizing those dollars. So does anybody want to guess, or does anybody know how much you're spending right now on homelessness, City of Las Cruces? What is your budget? Does anybody know? Okay, we'll come back to that. I'm sure that Natalie can tell you. But I think, you know, when we think about new solutions, it's really important to be like, "What's our current budget? What are we investing in now?" And then if we have more funds, what's the framework to make a decision? This is something our team came up with based on best practices and work we've done at other places. You could say, "We love two of these. We hate the rest," but we just want to give you something to react to. So this framework says, any new dollars invested in homelessness really needs to follow best practices. We need to be working on preventing and decreasing homelessness right now, and we need to know that our dollars are going to do those things. Again, I'm concerned that with the COC funds at risk, that you're going to lose some of the great programs you already have. So taking a look at what might get lost is an important activity for communities. I was, we just started working with Albuquerque, and I was in the mayor's office last week. And we had one little crisis, and the next crisis was this conversation. They're doing an analysis of what programs they partner with that might lose federal dollars, and they're preparing for that. Again, leverage what we do have. State funding is really interesting to me. New Mexico, you do state funding differently. It's not good or bad. It's just different. What do I mean by that? I mean that you had 120 million or something last year. One-time money, had to use it in a year. If we want to solve these problems, we need multi-year funding. So we, it's predictable, right? So I know you all got a chunk of that money and used it very well. But what I'm saying is, I can't look at a lot of my funding charts over here and tell you, "Yep, state of New Mexico, these are the..." You can fund this initiative or that initiative. It's not, there's not very many reoccurring funding sources in the state of New Mexico. And we'll talk about that a little more if we get into certain interventions. And then this is the one that kills most projects. What do I mean by projects? We're going to get into crisis response in a second versus housing. But a lot of the sort of emergency response initiatives that we learned how to do during COVID, they were really powerful, right? We did pallet shelters. We did motel conversions. We did vouchers. We did motel vouchers, short-term vouchers. We did tiny home models. We did a lot of interesting stuff during COVID, and it worked because it was funded by the federal government, right? Now we're seeing across the country, a lot of these models are winding down because the funds aren't there to operate them. So operating and having a comfort level that you've got about five years of operating before you fund something new is really important. What you don't want to do is fund a new intervention, and then within two years, you realize, "We don't have the million dollars to keep this thing going. You got to ramp it down," right? That will happen, but you don't want to start with that. You want to really make sure you can see the future of what you can control. It helps to have operators that have experience because then they not only can make sure that the project is successful, but they probably are really good at fundraising too. So we're going to need a lot of partnerships with local government to figure these models out. Again, is it eligible for state or local funding? This is a big one. Is it flexible? If funds go away, can the property be repurposed? One of the best projects I got to work on during COVID was with a church in Aurora, Colorado. They had about eight acres of dirt in front of the, it was a church and a shopping mall, but it's an area that's getting gentrified very quickly. And what they did is they said, "We're going to do a safe parking. We're going to do some pallet shelters, but we know the money's going to go away in three years. So we're going to start working on a permanent affordable housing project to take the place of these interventions." And so that was really cool to be involved in that because they were able to do something immediate, but then transitioned into a permanent solution. And then, and so that's what I mean about being flexible. Like, if you do this, do you have three other ways to take care of this in case those funds go away? And then everything really needs to be trauma-informed. I'm not a trauma-informed expert at all. And so when I do housing work and I do intervention work, I partner with my service providers, and I let them guide me through that process. But I've been doing this work for a very, very long time. At the policy level, I was the Director of Homelessness in Colorado for Governor Hickenlooper. And I learned that people have been kind of case-managed to death, and they don't trust a lot of stuff, and they've got a lot of barriers to getting into housing. And, but we know, if we get them housing with the right level of services, 80%, 90% success rates. And so we know how to do this. We just, it's a lot of work. In your packets, you saw... A lot. And again, this is not, this is a high-level snapshot. This is not a specific-to-Las Cruces implementation model. That would be a feasibility study. But what we were trying to do here on the left was talk about these different types of interventions, estimated costs, potential funding sources, comments, what would Las Cruces need to invest if they wanted to do this, population served, et cetera. And again, one of the key factors here, and I've got a slide that I think will do a better job than this chart, but is that tiny home villages, pallet shelters, emergency shelters, great interventions. Who pays for the operations? Big conversation. So operations can, you know, run anywhere from, for tiny homes, it can be 20,000 a year. For operations of a shelter, you know, 50, 60-bed shelter, about 900 to a million a year. These are big numbers. You cannot go to the state of New Mexico. There's no pot of money now, right? Back in COVID, we could do all kinds of stuff. I don't know of a pot of money. And so if your staff does, I hope they tell me. But I would anticipate if you want to do one of these interventions, you're going to be writing the check directly. So that's one of the sort of considerations of this conversation. I already did this. I do want to talk a little bit about crisis response. I kind of said it earlier, but I want to play with this a little bit more because I hope it's going to get questions rolling because we're almost to the questions slide, which is the fun part of the presentation. Crisis response, I've heard other people call it like temporary housing solutions. But it's where do we put people when they're outside that we want them to be somewhere so that we can engage in services? You have Camp Hope, which is a model nationally. But if you were to do something else, right? So again, there's congregate shelter. There's non-congregative shelter. There's tiny home. There are pallet shelters, there's safe parking. All of those programs, again, like the cost of doing them, the capital might be slightly cheaper. The operating is not. So you're trying to figure out, "How am I going to operate these things long-term?" Permanent housing programs, eviction prevention, homelessness prevention, rapid rehousing are your biggest bang for your buck. You'd be spending anywhere from 800 to 3 grand to keep somebody who's already housed housed. So if you're not funding those programs here, I highly recommend you take a look at that. That's just the best leverage. And again, Nicole, if they are, I'm sorry. But I just, and then, you know, we talk about permanent supportive housing and affordable housing. And again, in this model, and you all do this quite a bit, and you're seen as experts in New Mexico, right? You got Developer of the Year from Housing New Mexico. What I want to say to you about that is there's funds to leverage there. So you're gapping your new apartments, like Padrina, right? You know, you're, and Natalie may have to do the math here, but you're providing like 20,000 per unit in gap. You might have waived some fee waivers, right? That's a, that's a pretty amazing leverage, 20,000 per unit for 250,000. That's a, that's a pretty amazing leverage, 20,000 per unit for 250,000 or 270 of somebody else's money, right? So, that's why communities that are trying to solve homelessness and housing, make sure they maximize that program because it does have the leverage. Tiny homes came up at least in one conversation, maybe two, and so, we just wanted to have a slide ready to talk about this a little bit more. My staff did some research nationally, and then there's a tiny home village in Burnaleo. Actually, I have a tiny home village down the street from me that my friend runs, right? So, they're pretty common right now. But what I want to say is, who are you trying to serve? And how does it look? Because it's going to look different. So, my neighbor down the street, beautiful rural, there's chickens and dogs. It's a place for people who are renting or working seasonally in the valley. I live by the ski resort, so I've got friends that have lived in the village. It's a great place to start out in Durango. It's really nice. But, you know, I don't think they're staying long. My friend was going to have a baby, so they had to move out. My friend, when he created that, that was his idea. I want there to be a place where people can start in Durango, right? So, that's what it works. So, my point in all that is, we have to be really clear about who you're trying to serve and what you're trying to solve to figure out which model's going to work. So, again, this is just, you know, 50 to 100,000 for a tiny home unit. Some include bathrooms and kitchens, some don't. You still have to factor in land and infrastructure. This was a huge lesson during COVID when we cited the safe, the pallet shelters. I don't think you're doing those down here. They're doing them up north. But we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to get water, electricity, and sewer to these sites. We had no idea how expensive it would be. So, you do want to pay attention to that. We also had pretty big issues with people opposing the citing of those projects. Santa Fe just did a 10-unit pallet shelter about a year and a half ago, and they're really struggling to get the next one because it's very contentious where they're going to cite it. Operating, again, about 20,000 a home includes services, rent assistance. And again, there's one in Burnaleo County. Has anybody seen the one in Burnaleo? Have you? Cool. I'd love to hear about it. So, again, that's a little bit deeper dive into the tiny home model. And then, we are going to do questions, but our team just wanted to suggest different ways you might move forward. And of course, these could all change after the conversation. But, again, we're urging our clients right now to look at the federal funds coming into your community and come up with Plan A, B, and C. Continue the work that you're already doing that's innovative, Amador Crossing, work with NMSU, you work with Nicole, work with other groups, but don't, you know, think twice about starting something new. Like, again, the funds are going to go away. Make sure you can finish what you've started. Again, HMIS data, it feels like the data's here, but maybe not being provided in a format that people can understand what's happening. Again, once that translation happens, you can use that data for more advocacy for the work you want to do and maybe to increase resources so you can invest more. Think about flexible housing solutions and/or leveraging federal resources, and then think about adopting an evaluation framework if you are going to make new investments. That was a lot. Thank you so much for your time and attention. I'd love to have questions. Oh, yeah. Oh, wait. Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? Let's have Nicole come up. Sorry, I have one more, but I want to stop. I want to take questions.
Natalie, did we, do we want to do questions now? Or, or was, no, I'm not. Okay. Or was Nicole part of your presentation, or how did you want to?
It's really up to the council. If you want to maybe start the discussion, and then we can also open it up to Nicole and other members of the public who want to speak.
Okay. Were there questions? Counselor McClure?
Hi. Thank you, guys, for coming. I am really excited to talk about this. I have a lot of notes and a lot of questions, but maybe I'll just kick it off. We'll kind of, I've funneled down as you were talking. Going back to our comprehensive plan, Elevate, I'm just curious as to when this became shifted from housing diversity to crisis modeling. So, if we go to page 169 for, in Elevate, I'm just going to do a little bit of reading. Housing diversity refers to the mix of housing types such as single-family, detached, duplexes, townhomes, multifamily, mobile homes, et cetera. As, and this goes back a little bit to what you were saying too with, who's the audience for this, right? And it is a shifting in audience, right? As the baby boomers age and the millennial generation, hi, starts families, housing preferences are changing. Many empty nesters seek to downsize and live in housing types other than single-family homes. Alternatively, many millennials want to live in a setting that is walkable and close to destinations, which oftentimes doesn't translate to single-family neighborhoods. And, we had goals attached to that. We had timelines attached to that. I'd like to see where that is going. This is, this is approved. This is a plan.
What is it?
This is our comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
From 2020. And granted, global pandemic. Like, I get it, but I'm curious to start there, right now.
And that would be a Natalie question. I did not refer to your comp plan for this. What I was responding to was a conversation around homelessness concerns, and then just giving you a framework for thinking about, is, is our solutions, if we were to do them, a crisis response solution or a housing solution? So, it wasn't really in relationship to that. But if you would like, Natalie, that'd be great.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor McClure, in terms of the comprehensive plan, I would honestly defer to community development. They're really the implementer of market-rate housing. So, if staff is going to do affordable housing, we're going to do it in, and it's not to say that we, we can't do some of those. We're actually exploring townhouse kind of quadplex, duplex situation in the infill near Nevada Street. So, for our programs, it really becomes an economy of scale, right? So, where that investment can be made, where there's funding sources. So, I think we talked about the Lytech program. That's the biggest funder of affordable housing in the entire country. So, I can take something like a million dollars or $2 million and leverage that with Lytech and get several hundred units where I can take that same amount of money, and I can invest it in single-family housing, but I'm, at that point, depending on the level of subsidy for each family, then I'm only building 10, 15, 20. So, I, I think staff would need a little more direction on what affordable housing projects you would like us to work on, if that, but the comp plan would be a whole different discussion. I will add to council that our consultant route policy has been reaching out to folks. They will be here next week. We will be hosting a community and Housing Needs Open House in anticipation of redoing the Affordable Housing Plan, which is the plan that primarily guides the work that we do in housing and neighborhood services. So, that'll also be an opportunity to put in some of those additional goals. And while I'm up here, I'll just tell you, that's Wednesday from 3:00 to 7:00, it's open house. People can pop in and out. We did post on the city's Facebook. I will make sure to send a separate email after this work session to you all. And that'll be at the Las Cruces Home Builders Event Hall off North Main Street. And so, we are certainly exploring single-family, duplex, townhomes, but again, it becomes for what population, and we would evaluate how we finance those.
I'm going to push back just a little bit because we actually do mention tiny homes in this. So, and I know we've met with cul-de-sac tempe. So, I was looking to see what, what has been requested from some of my constituents. And a lot of times, it's car-free. To a large degree, it's, it's a matter of what, what other models can we look at? So, we had discussions with that. And then, funnily enough, they, they were really interested in Las Cruces. And part of this too was partner with NMSU to provide additional off-campus student, staff, and faculty options. Things like this is kind of what I wanted to see. I, I really do appreciate all the information on the unhoused and want to support that effort continually. But, my question is, why aren't we doing some of the things that we said we would be doing? And, yeah, it's just bringing those back. We had two meetings with that. Like to see where we can go with that. Action Plan Two had adopt clearer building standards specific to tiny homes. Why are we not using some of the ideas provided by Realize? That's what I'd like to see as well.
Great. Let me take this one on. This was my last slide, but I think this is where you want to go, I hope. So, it might say it in a planning document or a strategy to do tiny homes, you still need all of these things to happen, right? So, I'd love to just, this is sort of an outline of feasibility we do every time we do a project. And, and I just think it's a great exercise, and it leads to clarity about, can we do this, for who, and who would be a partner, and who's going to do it? So, right, we say, get consensus on the problem you're trying to solve. Be clear on the target population to be served. So, tiny home solves what problem, being very clear. Who in the community sees that problem the same way that you do? And what is that population that wants to have a tiny home as a solution, right? That's, that's, we do a lot of environmental scans and, just like we did a baby one for this work session, but it's not rocket science. It's just a lot of conversations, right, to get, it's, I'm teaching a class up north with 12 communities, and I, my first session, I say, you need to check your assumptions with community, right? And you need to do it in a way that you are going to end up with the right housing for the right population, and it takes a little bit of time. And then, if everybody says yes, like my friend Chris, yes, I see a need for folks coming to Durango who want a small rental to get, you know, I see the things. He was willing to do it. So, the question becomes, if you do tiny homes, who does it, right? Is there a provider? And that's great. If there's a provider, then you've got somebody to be a thought partner on it, right? I'll be really blunt because that's my job. When I work with local governments, I'm trying to mitigate your risk. The best way to mitigate your risk is to make sure there's a partner can take things on so that it's not on you, right? Because you have limited staff capacity. So, who could do it? There's an operator perspective potentially, maybe not, right? So, my friend Chris just manages his own property, right? So, depends on who you're serving. But just getting really clear on all those roles for your project. And then, how much will it cost? So, again, we had high-level numbers. They don't mean anything. We can't really do feasibility, and we do this all the time, unless we have a very specific site. So, we can say, yes, it has water, it has sewer, it has zoning, right? It has all the things. We can put an actual cost to that. There's a pro forma to it. Who's going to build the tiny home? What is the cost rate? So, you really want to have a pretty strong pro forma about it. And then, is there an operating cost? So, again, if you're not serving people who need services, then the operating cost might be very low. It could be just like a, some kind of HOA structure or whatever. I mean, then where will your capital come from and how long will it take? So, again, just a little feasibility checklist. So, I think maybe the question is, this maybe hasn't been, you know, flushed out.
Vote no to HOA is just, as a side note.
I agree to that, actually. Thank you very much, Counselor.
Part of the, the question too is, we do want to do a survey. I think the mayor has talked about, you know, what, what does the status look like right now? We have a lot of unknowns, partially because we don't share data. You know, there's a lot of, you know, if there, if you read siloed in there, it is absolutely siloed. You know, we don't share data in any meaningful ways that make people understand what we are doing. To a large degree, we're doing a lot of good things. But the thing is, is those 5,000 homes that we're still missing can look like a lot of different things. So, multi-generational housing, yeah. I might have done tiny homes, but I had my mom with me. So, I'd like to have a, a look at what, can we do stipends on that? What, what does that kind of programming look like? And I think Realize has enabled a lot that we can do, and I'd like to look into that.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there other questions? Anything that was surprising or anything that you want clarity on?
Anyone else? Counselor Grant?
Yeah, I'm not promising that I won't have other questions, but just building on what Counselor McClure said. Also, thank you, everyone, for being here, those we've heard from and those who we are yet to hear from. And I think what Counselor McClure's comments are making me think about, it's, it is so hard to characterize this population because it's so multifaceted. And right now, I'm thinking, in the simplest terms, the very simplest terms, we have an, a housed population and an unhoused population, and then we have people who are kind of in this liminal space, housing insecure, on the bubble. And I think your presentation showed us very elegantly that that population is growing as we sit here. And I appreciate all of the materials you gave us in advance, you know, and I think as you're saying, who, who are we serving? Who is the, who is the audience, as my fellow rhetorician was framing it? And recognizing that for, again, my vocabulary isn't perfect here, when we're talking about a higher, a higher-needs population, so people who are perfect for permanent supportive housing, who need services, who need support, who need onsite access to counselors, who need, we all need trauma-informed care, but, or especially in need of trauma-informed care, permanent supportive housing is the answer. It also takes a really long time to make it happen. And the concern that I'm feeling is while this liminal space of people who are housing insecure are potentially falling into being unhoused, where are places where we can move faster to, to serve that population? Also recognizing that once you become, once someone becomes unhoused, their needs are going to rise precipitously because of the trauma, because of, you know, I've learned so much in my four short years here about the, that oftentimes it's the effects of homelessness that people attribute to be the cause of homelessness. Oh, you, you know, you became homeless because of substance use disorder, because of mental illness, when in fact, it's being unhoused that leads to that situation. So, sorry, huge word salad to say, and, and if I'm mischaracterizing what you're saying, Counselor McClure, please jump back in, but for a less high-needs population, where are spaces where we can move more quickly than permanent supportive houses, housing tends to take?
No, I would say that's not a mischaracterization. Definitely transition in that way. Yep.
I'm going to do this, but I also want to invite Nicole up at any time. You're welcome to come up anytime. So, my response to people who have less service needs but are living on the edge, it's not another housing unit. It's an eviction prevention program or rapid rehousing. It's money and nine months to 24 months of stability counseling, cheapest intervention you're ever going to find. So, I think that's one piece of it, right? So, maybe I'll do this because Natalie put this in here. I mean, we're talking about your continuum, right? And, you know, again, we came in thinking there was more of an interest in talking about people who are unhoused, but we can talk across that continuum. And I'm sure that staff has data on the different interventions across that continuum. What I'm trying to say, and this is my, my, what I'm trying to be as helpful as possible is, be prepared for the unhoused to grow. Like, if I, you know, you only have one thing you can work on, be prepared for that to grow and look at resources to, to get ahead of that, and you will save yourself thousands of dollars as a community if you can do that. But, yeah, this, to me, this work session was on homelessness. If you want to do one across the continuum, I'm sure Natalie would do that.
I mean, I really want to throw out things like, we had a developer come who wanted to build downtown. He wanted to build a grocery store with livable spaces up on top. These are the things where it's like, maybe it's not something that everybody wants, but somebody will choose it for themselves. And we're not giving those, those options right now. That's what I'd like to see. And we're not, I'm not finding that. I feel like Realize has enabled a lot, right? I'm beating this dead horse again. But the thing is, is, look, do we do accessory dwelling units and help one with stipends, right? My neighborhood has big areas where I can put probably two more on there. I'd love to do that. I'd love to have that availability to do stuff like that where we're helping not only homeowners, but we're helping people who could live in more flexible living arrangements.
We have done a ton of research on ADUs. I'm in Colorado, we've gone a little hog wild. I'm from Iowa, I can say stuff like that. No, we've gone a little crazy on a bunch of different interventions, and we're, we're learning in real time. And again, some of it's failed and happy to talk about that. But ADUs, we found that you can allow ADUs by right, but you also have to provide financing for the home buyer to be able to afford to actually build the ADU. And that's not a bad thing, but again, it's a great intervention model, but it's got to be a full package. So, you got to have funding, and then, and then the plans, right? You want to have like pre-approved plans. So, that's sort of the trifecta. So, again, I think there's, you know, pilots that could be adopted. Yeah.
And that's exactly what I'm aiming for, is pilots right now, for different types of ideas that I know that our housing staff can come up with, and I'd like to see options like that.
Great.
Counselor Grant?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation and, and all of this context. I, I agree. I think I would love for us to keep expanding what, what is possible in terms of that, that end of the continuum and, and leveraging Realize and getting a public bank and trying to figure out ways to fund things in, in more systematic, localized approaches. But, coming back to the, what you said about bang for the buck and, and what that is, my sense of what you're saying is, keep on with considering how we're engaging in the building, right? Which is a different place in the continuum and really important. But, invest more resources in eviction prevention, rapid rehousing, and I'm guessing landlord risk mitigation, which isn't among these, but I think that's part of this package perhaps, of just keeping those folks on the edge and in whatever ways possible. And I, I think we have some models for this, but I don't know that they're the places where we invest. where we invest the most money. So it sounds like, you know, if we're taking $2 million to say, "We don't want more people to become unhoused in the next year," those are the two places where we would put that most effectively and affect the most people and keep people out of the system that...
Thank you, Counselor. I think so, but I'd love to hear from Nicole. Let's hand it to the local expert. Thank you. Thanks for paraphrasing.
Good afternoon, Council. Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, my name's Nicole Martinez, I'm the Director at the Sea Valley Community of Hope. I do have words prepared, so I won't be speaking off the cuff so much today, but I do want to answer a lot of your questions. I've been taking some notes and I would love to answer some questions at the end. I think I also thought that this was going to be about like homelessness and housing and things like that, so I'm going to give you a little bit more information than probably you wanted on that, but I think that it's important that you understand how complex the, the data and the systems are and how much we do want to partner. And I am not here for dramatic effect, and I'm very sorry that it seem, may seem that way. I'm actually really happy to be here today. So I wanted to touch deeper on some of the things that you've heard from the consultants. And I think a lot of times when people think about Community of Hope, they think, "Oh, it's that place that runs that, throws people in wooden shelters and sometimes gets them into apartments." We're doing so much more than that, and I wanted to kind of touch on some of those systems and data points because I think it's a lot more complex than people understand. A lot of times when you see me up here, I'm just throwing data out because it can be hard to get that data to you in meaningful ways, so I'll be saying things like, "Oh, it takes us 26 days on average to house a homeless veteran," which I think is pretty significant for us. But as you've heard earlier, we are beholden to a much larger and complex data system called the Homeless Management Information Systems, HMIS. We've been using that program since about 2007 and '08, and it is clunky. Lately, there's talk of creating a statewide data system that may be coming forward with all of the governor's new initiatives toward housing and data, and we're most willing to work with the state and see on how to best aggregate that data and share it responsibly. We've been somewhat cautious about having a parallel data system because it's a lot to have to enter into two systems, especially when you're dealing with people in crisis. But we're hopeful that the systems will work together in some way to include all programs and all outcomes, not just our federal programs and HMIS. Currently, we also utilize an internal database for all other programs that we operate. We have at least 20 different types of housing and homeless-related programs. I also recently received some private foundation funding for us to build capacity in our data even more, so we're internally creating a new Salesforce data collection program for the agency to help us determine what our strengths and our gaps may be. One of the things we're excited to come from that is having kiosks in our lobby to help reduce some of the duplication that we might be having in our data. You've also heard about the coordinated entry system. And this is a little bit into the weeds, but it's a requirement for our federal funding. We're the grant recipient for the southern part of the state, and this tool is used for prioritizing housing for people. So my case managers can't just say like, "I like you, I think you're going to do a great job." You have to go through this whole coordinated entry survey, and then people get prioritized and actually ranked. It's a sticking point for sure. How do you rank somebody's vulnerability and homelessness? But this is what comes from our, our housing funding. It's also been a large part of our success in that we can prioritize our own clients for housing immediacy. For example, the New Mexico Coalition to End Homelessness does coordinated entry for most of the rest of the state. So you take somebody in Gallup, has to do their survey at an agency, and that survey gets sent to the coalition, another agency far away, has to get scored, and then the number gets sent back, client gets that number, and then the client gets to go find a housing agency and figure out what voucher is appropriate for them. We're doing it all in-house. They come in, they do the coordinated entry, they get prioritized. You're going to rapid rehousing, you're going into permanent supportive housing, you need one-time assistance, we can figure all of that out internally. You've also heard of the Continuum of Care, just real briefly. The Continuum of Care is a pot of funds that are just like the Section 8 from our Housing Authority, but it's set aside specifically for people experiencing homelessness. And I know Jen touched on this. I apply for these funds and compete against the entire state and all the agencies to annually bring in over at least $1.3 million in housing funding and staffing funding for the Community of Hope. Now, do you want to switch gears a little bit? Because a few years back, I heard someone at a summit say that people in agencies are working in silos. And I was like, "What? Who? Who's doing that? Are we doing that? Is that us? What's happening? No way. We partner with everybody on the campus. We work with FYI, we have La Clinica, they familiar, and our Linkages grants, and on so many coalitions across the state, the state and statewide initiatives and meetings. I do think that silo is a little bit of a buzzword. It is not without its dangers, and I don't want to be siloed agency. Because lately, I have seen a lot of newcomers come in with, newcomers come in with ideas that to me have been siloed. There have not been ideas of collaborations. Some of them are ideas of the past that have been shown time and again to not work for communities, but since time has passed and people are new or unfamiliar with best practices, they're a bit more willing to throw out some of these ideas. This can be the time for pilot programs, but they should be ones where we are strategic and we are talking to each other, not over each other, and certainly not revisiting programs that do more harm than good. This is the time to utilize things we know work, and we know housing works, and we know that the city is making great strides in this department, and not just the city. We're partnering with the county, Jamie, I know you're right behind me, on a new pilot for people exiting incarceration to homelessness. Chief, I need to revisit that with you. I know we've had one conversation. We're getting closer and I do want to keep that conversation going. We also work with the Assisted Outpatient Treatment Program and the RISE Program. I hear lately the return to the idea of the emergency shelter, the idea of discharging someone from jail to shelter, sending our families to shelter, getting people hidden off the streets, people exiting recovery to a shelter. But the peril in this is that you are all saying, "Let's keep people homeless and let's spend a ton of money to do it." I started at Community of Hope in 2006 to run the family shelter, and it did keep people homeless. Staffing that was a nightmare. It was at the time that the Director and I decided to ask HUD if we could instead move people out of the shelter and into their own apartments. And I went out and met as many landlords as I could and I moved every single family out, and only had one family that returned. I said, "Let's do more than this. Let's get people off the streets permanently." We did this ahead of the curve. A few years later, HUD stopped focusing their funding to shelters and instead made permanent and rapid rehousing the focus. But the focus has changed again. We have heard from our current federal administration that they want more shelters and not housing for people. Are we following that playbook when we know it's wrong? We all want a simple fix, but this is not that. Another shelter is what you do when you don't have what we have in Las Cruces, this new pipeline for housing. We must also increase the wraparound resources in housing, including substance use treatment and mental health solutions. Solutions, what is working? We've heard consultants say things like Amador Crossing, also Camp Hope, which still doesn't utilize any city funding and is affordable. We've also been utilizing motels. They haven't worked for every community. We have some really great motel partners, but that should be something that's very short-term. We served 166 people in motels last year with 489 stays. That's how many people you would have seen outside on the streets with our emergency responders going out if we weren't working with them in the shelters. We use counting funding for motels, and we use our family basus motel funds while looking for the long-term housing solutions. We also have the great work of the Greta Huckabee Fund. I heard recently that it can be upsetting to have families living in motels, but I would prefer to have a family there than living outside or sleeping in their car, as long as we can make sure that that's short-term. Using motels means that the hotel is also paying their own staff. City's not paying for the staff, the agencies aren't paying for the staff, they're paying for those operations, and it could make better sense than possibly starting a new shelter. I also wonder who would run the shelter if we brought one in? Would their work orders get attended to ours more quickly? That's my own little selfish piece right there, that's it. Would the city bring in an out-of-town company to run it? Because we all know how well that has gone in our state, in our own community. I think we should be looking at some motel conversions, those are some new ideas. We also have the Community of Hope 10-year master plan, so we can better respond to things like natural disasters, to refugees, unforeseen circumstances. The kitchens has plenty of design opportunities at this point to address some of this. We're also talking of building a new Hardin. What will we do with our empty Hardin? We can do whatever we want that makes sense and is in lease. But we have ideas and we, we should be talking about those things and how we can smartly use the assets that we have. Some of my fears for the future, homeless prevention and permanent supportive housing are threatened to be cut. Last year, we housed 2,869 people. That's including 1,004 children. If you reduce that, you get the number that Jen presented to you early, but overall, we're housing families and adults. We need to preserve what we have, and if we use all of our funds on things we know don't work, what have we done? How will we provide any safety net for those affected by these times? And just to comment, I want to hear things like, "What we're doing is not working." I've heard that from the state level top, I've heard that locally. I immediately conjure the knowledge of how we got here, and I think it's important to dredge up a brief history lesson. In the eighties, institutions were shut down, the promise of compassionate, community-based clinics were supposed to be opened, and that didn't happen. The institutions were indeed shut down, but there was no safety net for folks who could not manage living on their own and still who did, to this day, struggle to do so. So we are left with our most vulnerable on the streets. That's what didn't work. That and skyrocketing housing prices. On a more micro level, I will say that what we're doing is working for many of the people. In fact, our funding depends on that. Imagine if we hadn't housed over 2,000 people last year? We are meeting the thresholds and in most cases, exceeding them. We also have programs like Mono a Mono and Outreach which have been invaluable solutions to addressing people surviving on the streets. We do not want to see people wallowing in substance use on our streets or even in the privacy of their own homes. I think about recovery all the time, and that's why I constantly reach out to my partners at Amador Health, Ideal Option, La Clinica. I'm not the recovery specialist, but if I'm not thinking of how to incorporate it, I am failing. We have ideas on how to bring more recovery units to our town, and I do want to partner on this, so please talk to me about it. Council, please do not full steam ahead anything, but let's keep talking. I'm open for one-on-ones anytime, or calling me to the mayor's office, whatever we need to do. Just know that I want to be part of the solution. I ask that you lift us up so that we can keep lifting up our community with hope. That ends my actual comments. Thank you, but I do want to address just a couple of things. I will say, we were awarded Grow Money from the state, and we got $200,000, which is discretionary funding, and I asked, I asked for that funding for one-time assistance so I didn't have to use clunky old HMIS, and we could just house people who were coming in, like, "I need one month, I need three months." And we spent that $200,000, that was for two years, in less than a year. We overspent it and we ate a bunch of that money. It was very useful for people. It's so hard to say no, but those, that was an example of something where we had this pot of money and we made sure that we could say, "But for our assistance, you're going to be able to stay housed on your own once we're done." I know that coordinated entry can take a long time, once somebody gets scored to get into housing, and so it makes it feel like there is a gap. I do understand that sometimes it can be really quick, like with our vets, it can be really quick. With rapid housing, that can be really quick. A lot of times, it's, it's been dependent on our landlords. We're so helpful, hopeful with Amador Crossing that that wait time will be much, much faster because we'll issue those vouchers and they'll get to go right in. And then with some of the other affordable housing complexes that are coming online, the landlord risk mitigation funding, that's what I applied for when we had ARP funding that came through. So we were the first in the state to start that type of funding, and it's also been an invaluable resource. It's helped us with people who do come in, who might just need that gap money before they need to have all their wraparound supportive services. You know, like somebody who's in a Housing Authority voucher, they don't have to have case management, they can take care of it on their own, but they are experiencing poverty. So there are programs that we can do that get to that level if we can use some of these targeted programs that we're doing. Now, the ARP money from the city of Las Cruces for landlord risk mitigation is quickly drying up, but I did pitch it to Secretary Nair, and she has agreed that some of that funding is coming to Community of Hope and sees that it obviously has a valuable place here in this community so that hopefully we can quickly address as many people as we can. And I'd like to stand for any other questions you may have.
Mayor Rotem?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have questions for you specifically, Natalie. I also want you to sit down.
Nicole?
If you can. Oh, Nicole, I'm so sorry.
All the time.
All the time, you're right. First of all, I want to thank you for being here and just very happy to see you. We've been worried about you, and so I just really am genuinely very happy to see you. And thank you for being here. Again, if you'd like to maybe sit right here in the mic?
Sit for questions?
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. I, you know, I don't have any questions particularly on that. I do want to talk about some specific things that you mentioned, Jen, but just before I get to that, I want to just real quick address the conversation happening right now. And if I, maybe a little honest, I think I'm a little bit surprised by it because I would, I think, I think it's incredibly important that we focus our time and resources into diversifying housing options, right? At all of these levels, but particularly at the transitional, supportive, and up level. I, I think that that's the goal. I mean, I think that's what Realize, we hope for it to do, right? I would love that, and I, I think, I just want to zoom out a little bit because I fear, I feel like the last year or two, there has been a push by some members of this council and some advocates for us to focus on crisis modeling, even if experts, even if data is saying that's the wrong way to go. I feel like that shift has happened. And I feel like, I mean, I don't agree with that shift necessarily, right? And I, sometimes I fear that the desire to do crisis response is more of a desire to fix the visibility of homelessness versus the prob, like root cause of homelessness. And I, right, like I think we have gotten stuck in that in the past, right? We did a shopping cart ban, there's political fodder about a camping ban, like all of these things are sort of things that are going backwards and that are like crisis-focused as opposed to long-term focused. So I guess I'm not surprised by this presentation that you came with some of those things because I have noticed that shift as well. But I do appreciate you naming the realities of a lot of those, right? That a lot, often crisis intervention may seem like it's quick, but it's also very expensive and it's not durable, right? And so I do appreciate that. That's all I say, I'll say there. I think with this conversation, it feels like what needs to happen is that we just need to be clear, and you did note that, so it might have been me from this report, that it seems like we just need to be clear about the plans we have with the public and more direct about it, right? And I think even just from this conversation, it's clear that we need to be clear about the roadmap to address homelessness right now in the short term. And then that roadmap to like transitional housing, and then the rest, right? Like how do we keep people in their homes, and then how do we make sure that we are diversifying housing? And I think it's important to name that across this entire spectrum, there is still pushback against all of these, against all of these ideas. So I'm not entirely sure what some folks are looking for, but I think we just have to learn how to navigate that and talk about this a little bit better. And part of it, I think, is a narrative shift. I do want to name three things that I think, in terms of like pilot programs, that I've heard already sort of like bubbling, and I think, I do think, you know, motel conversion is, we've been talking about this for a long time. It felt like in the past, maybe that it wasn't the right time, or it wasn't perhaps the right opportunity. I do feel like with the MRAs, potentially, that could be a really good opportunity, or with some of the recent news coming out of some motels, right? Because I know you have some good motel partners, but there's also some bad motel partners and neighbors. And I think there is a pathway where we can sort of navigate and negotiate with those partners that aren't as good as neighbors to figure out... partners that aren't as good as neighbors to figure out a potential strategy. So I do think there's something to be worked out there that I do hope happens in collaboration. I recently talked to Jardín de los Niños, and they're very sad they couldn't be here. But they have some, a great idea for some housing options for single moms that I think we should consider. I don't want to speak on it because they're not here and it should be up to them. But again, to me, it's about following the lead of a service provider that already has a plan, right? That is just looking for additional funding. And then I think, you know, if we were going to beef any sort of program up, it would be landlord mitigation, right? In your report, you talk about, it says, in New Mexico, 76.6% of renters that make less than $50,000 are cost-burdening, meaning they spent 30% or more of their income on housing costs such as rent or mortgage payments and utilities. To me, those are the folks that are most at risk for becoming homeless and potentially an area where we should be hyper-focused on so that they don't lose housing and become unhoused. So to me, those are three takeaways that I'm taking. And, you know, I do want to say to the tiny home pilot, there was an organization last year, a nonprofit, that was thinking about doing something like this with, like, DACC and some high schoolers that would make the tiny homes. And they were really interested in it, and they were sort of really wanted to make it to a specific population, which was actually youth exiting the foster system and what that could mean for building a community like that. But they're, but they couldn't find a nonprofit that was sort of willing to say, yeah, that feels like it could be part of our mission or, and I don't think that's like a shameful thing. I think people are being very clear about the increased burden that they have. I think people are being very clear about the federal landscape and what is going to mean for a lot of our nonprofit partners in the next few years. And so I do think that there's, I think people in our community have a lot of ideas, and I want to make sure that we are fully exploring as many as possible and, you know, recognizing that none of them are like the silver bullet magic wand solution in that. Sometimes it does take time. And while that is frustrating, I think doing it right is better than doing it fast. So I guess I didn't have any questions. But maybe as for next steps, I would like to learn more about motel conversions and the way that we could do that responsibly for potentially that like transitional piece. I think that is it for me. I do want to know, Natalie, how much we are investing now? That was a good question, and I think maybe we all failed that quiz. But Councilor Corn and I were very excited that we knew the light tech answer.
I wrote it down. Mr. Mayor, Natalie Green, for the record, and I lost it. Where did I do it? I will say, if you don't take into account Mono A Mono, since most of the funding goes to the residents, it is $281,250. So that's what we invest in homeless services. And that's inclusive of both Sea Valley Community Hope and then some of the shelter services we fund through La Casa. I did want to take an opportunity. I think the piloting stuff can happen through the MRA, so I just wanted to invite Chris up real quick to talk about Realize and the opportunities in the MRAs because I think that's really where those pieces come out of. Not out of housing and neighborhood services, but in collaboration with community development, economic development, and the MRAs.
Good afternoon, Mayor. City Council, Chris Favor, Community Development Director, for the record. Yes, thank you for including me in this conversation, Natalie. There's, there's a lot of roads that kind of lead back to and through community development, starting with Elevate Los Cruces. There were definitely some things and goals outlined in Elevate that were taken into account when we went through Realize Los Cruces, which for those in the audience that may not know, that's, you know, when we redid the land development code that was adopted this past February. It's been up and running this year, and we've seen, we've seen a lot of interest from our development partners that are looking at a wide range of things, both, you know, your traditional single-family homes, but also we're seeing a lot of interest in redeveloping within the MRAs. And there's still some additional tweaks that we can make to realize that will make that even easier and potentially more affordable. I was just having a discussion with Natalie about some options this morning. So among staff, we're continuously trying to work to find ways to, to further those, those developments. And I know Elizabeth Teeters and her team are working real hard on programming for those MRAs. But specifically, you know, Realize, a couple of things that really kind of lend itself to some of the redevelopment options, I would say, would be the increased density that we've allowed in all of the residential areas, some of the restrictions that we've, we've removed from lot sizes, right? So now you can increase that density and those sort of things work hand in hand within the infill area or those specific MRAs. One other thing I would actually just throw out there too, and as you all know, we're really just getting the NAT program off the ground, but I do think that over the next couple of years, we're going to see a lot of vacant land opportunities specifically within the MRAs that may allow some of these pilot projects to come to fruition, whether it is working with some hotels that, that could, you know, could be doing a little bit better or with land that becomes vacant through demolition or however that process would work. But I do think we're going to see some opportunities there, whether it's for tiny homes or other types of things. But we have seen really good response from the development community. They do seem very interested in redeveloping in the MRA, in the infill area. And I would say even more than I was expecting to see within the first year. And as we all know, there was some uncertainty with Realize when it was adopted and then at the time it was put on hold. But since the summer to now, we've actually seen quite a bit of interest. And I would just encourage, you know, everyone to keep working together, you know, to keep making Realize, you know, the best it can be to address some of these housing options. And I guess I too will stand for questions. Thank you.
No other questions? Okay. Well, Natalie, Jen, thank you for the presentation. Chris, thank you for your comments and mentioning the NAT program. That's, that's also something that can be utilized and, and something in the future. Nicole, thank you for all that you do. I really appreciate everything that's going on there. One of the things, you know, that, that last slide where you talk about the feasibility and all those things, that's really the next step, as Councilor McClure had mentioned, the survey that's going to take place. We're going to gather some grant money that was provided to us from the government to do a survey and to include the stakeholders in the community, which is police, fire, the hospitals, the Los Cruces Public Schools, our court system, recovery, nonprofits, Community of Hope, absolutely, for sure. We, we're looking at, as you mentioned, it's only going to get worse. So this is to, you know, put the resources where we get the best return on our investment and get some results for the problems that we see. Some people may already see it as a crisis, and others may say it's a crisis ready to happen. Either way, we need to do something. So this is to build on. And also developers, partners will be involved there so that, you know, it's just, it's just not a city problem as an organization. It's a community problem. And we all have to come together as stakeholders to see how we can combat this and come up with the best solutions. And never, never am I saying that we're not doing good or we're not doing something right because we are and you are, Nicole. It's how do we build on it? How do we supplement? How do we complement? That's what we're trying to do. And that would be the next step, to make sure that where we're putting the resources, it goes to something that's, that's correcting the issues that are taking place. Because if you drive around the city, you see people camped out throughout, and we want to get them housed. We want to find them a place. And that's what the survey will do with the stakeholders. So as Mayor Protem stated, we want to get the community input. We want to find out, what are you dealing with? What issues are you faced with and how we can support that? So that would be the next thing. So again, thanks for your presentation and adding some of those because we don't know what the answer is. Is it converting hotels? Is it tiny homes? What, what is the answer? Let's get the input from the community and find out what are the issues and what direction do we go best into? And with that, I don't know if there was other members of the public that wanted to have a few minutes to come up and speak? Yeah? Yes, sir. Yeah, come on up.
My name is Cleve Hattersley. I'm a four-year resident here, although my wife's family has been here for 40, 40 years or so. We lived in Austin, where I was a member of the entertainment and political communities for about 45 years, involved in all sorts of homeless issues as well as political issues. I am a member of the Austin Music Hall of Fame, and I also managed Kinky Friedman's gubernatorial campaign, the first candidate to ever get on the ballot as an independent candidate. I wanted to ask everybody in the room if you are familiar with the term flying signs. Can you tell me what that means to you?
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I believe you're referring to panhandling with a sign in hand?
That is correct. That is correct. And the fact that only one person actually offered that tells me that there is a certain disconnect with that community and the rest of us. And I wanted to offer a suggestion. We have recently, some friends of mine and I have recently discovered a program being run by one man in Los Angeles. It's called Soft White Underbelly. And what he has done over the last few years is taken his own personal fortune and given all of these underserved, underprivileged homeless people a chance to speak. He films them. He lets them tell their story. He asks them what their specific needs are. Now, I intend to do that here in this community. It's private, but if the, if the city council understands what this does, not only focusing and understanding these people better, but also giving you a format for promoting. Because once the community sees the people, real people, just like the rest of us, maybe with unfortunate circumstances, when they tell their stories, they feel better about doing something for them. And that's what I think needs to be done, and that's what we're going to do. I think it's here. I think the hearts of these people are in it. We congratulate them for doing the work they're doing, but the money has to be used faster. It has to be used more efficiently, and the best way to do it is know whom you are serving. That's it. Thank you.
Yeah, now, I'll add to that. When I was talking about the survey, it's not only getting the stakeholders, but it's, it's working with NMSU and their students and their research to create a survey so we can go out to the individuals out in the public, in the streets that are, are suffering at this time and find out exactly what's going on in their lives. So there's another component to that survey as well. Okay. Go ahead, sir. State your name.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Jeff Curry. I am a for-profit developer, born and raised here in Los Cruces. We have developed over 70 properties in the Southwest. We manage over 160 properties, all affordable housing. That's about 7,000 units. And I've had the opportunity to see in multiple states developments and, and how they are handled. And I wanted to start by just saying that Los Cruces is top-notch. You guys are doing an amazing job. I serve on a federal home loan bank board called the Affordable Housing Advisory Council. I happen to serve with Nicole. And we get to tour in other states what are considered best practices for dealing with homelessness. And what they've shown us is exactly what Nicole is doing when dealing with homeless people. They're showing us what is the best practice, and that is what Nicole is doing. Also, I want to commendate what Nicole, I'm sorry, what Natalie has been doing. Changing the zoning standards and removing barriers to creating additional housing is great work. And I want you to, I just encourage you to keep on that road. For me, I had one cautionary tale, and that was that during the pandemic, of course, we were trying to address these emergencies of homelessness. I was brought into a project in Santa Fe and said, what can we do quickly? Can we do a motel conversion quickly? We had tons of money, and the idea was to do a motel conversion. I said, yes, absolutely, let's do this. It seemed like a slam dunk. But because it was new, because we were dealing with groups of people that haven't done this for years or didn't deal with housing, it stagnated. And I have now been working on this since our first award of $4 million in 2021, and now I have $11 million. I still am trying to close the final gap so I can start construction now. It is not easy to do something new. What the city can do, what I feel like is the most bang for anyone's buck, is to follow the process of ensuring that developers have an easy access to put on more housing. But the federal tax, low-income housing tax credit program is the most bang for your buck to guarantee more housing in a community. So anyway, that's, that's my biggest recommendation for you all and what I see from the outside. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. My name is Jamie Michael. I am with the county's Health and Human Services Department. I'm just going to start off with a little bit of data. The county over the last several years has invested just under $700,000 a year in homelessness services. It's a combination of county grocery receipts, grant funding, and state appropriations. And that money is awarded through Community of Hope through a competitive RFP process and a contract we have with Community of Hope. So just under $700,000 kind of average over the last three years. We are, as Nicole said, in the process of developing a transitional supportive housing project. We looked at data, and during 2024, there were 450 bookings into the county detention center where the individual listed no home address, and they were misdemeanor crimes that they were booked into the detention center for. We also have been operating several different criminal justice diversion and reentry programs over the last eight years. And collectively across all of those programs, about half of the people in those programs are also experiencing homelessness. And those programs are all for people who have substance use or other mental health disorders. So that's the combination of housing and, and mental health services. And that's why we've decided to do the transitional supportive housing. It will be on Motel Boulevard, right across from the county government center. There is a vacant lot that the county purchased with money from the governor last year. And we also received some grant funds from the state to develop the land to make a lot of outdoor living space. And we will be utilizing two, we're repurposing two modular buildings that were previously used by volunteer fire departments. Each of the units has four bedrooms and four bathrooms and then a common living and kitchen space. So those will be moved from the outlying areas to that location, and each will be able to house four people. At this point, it's for adult males in diversion programs. There is quite a bit of space there for future expansion. That is the update on that. And you also mentioned emergency housing, like during a crisis, either if we have more people here who are seeking asylum or in a natural disaster emergency. I don't have all the details, but I know that the county is also working and creating those types of shelters out at the fairgrounds. So there are some resources for that type of emergency during like a natural disaster emergency. Just want to make sure that's on your radar. Thank you all.
Hello, Councilor. My name is Eric Salsito.
Yeah, if you could speak directly to the microphone.
My name is Eric Salsito.
Thank you.
And I am here on behalf of Rembrandt Alley. He's a local architect that has done amazing work here in the city. And he has a huge heart for, for helping, and he wasn't able to make it today. He had an ulcer. So he asked me to step in for him. So here I go. I have this first time doing this. It's pretty interesting how it works. It looks really cool. But I'm going to set these down because I have a question. Exactly who to address it to, but was there at a time there was a law against panhandling that was enforced here? Was there a law in Los Cruces that was, you couldn't panhandle? You couldn't? And is that law no longer in place?
I think our city attorney is, oops.
The attorney is not here. So it is a First Amendment, a First Amendment-protected right, so people have the ability to hold signs. So once we Uh, so once we, we can't regulate, one group can hold a sign that says car wash versus help me. Um, however, the city did institute some safety, but it's a time and place issue, so there's safety precautions, uh, where folks cannot, um, stand on medians of a certain width with a certain speed. Um, and then there's a, a few other, um, they can't enter the lane of traffic. Um, but again, it still falls under certain protections under the First Amendment of the Constitution.
Okay, thank you. I just thank you for clearing that up. And, uh, the, the, one of the reasons why I was asking was when they, when they came up with the numbers of the homeless people, did they take in consideration the, like the professional homeless people that migrate, you know, with the sun belt? That was my, my, my question is that there are people that, you know, they follow the weather and, you know, they have an endless summer, but they, they don't want to be in a program that's going to help them. They, they, that's their life, that's their lifestyle, they travel, they, they make a living out of it. And it's a mix of, there's the need and then there's the people that are taking advantage of, you know, the public's kindness, but does that get, uh, mixed in with the surveying?
Um, we have considered that. One of the things we're actually planning hopefully for this spring is I'd like to bring, um, Greg Colburn. He did, um, a data analysis on homelessness across the country and pulled a lot of data and, and, and did an assessment of those, um, things. Is it the weather? Is it drug use? Is it, uh, financial insecurity? Um, and he scatter plotted them all across, um, graphs. It's a, it's a great book. I have a copy, should council want to see it. Um, and the one consistent data point is that was the vacancy rate, so homelessness is a housing issue. Um, there was lots of communities that have great weather but have low levels of homelessness. There's lots of communities that have very terrible weather, um, for example, Boston, freezing cold, but yet has high rates of homelessness. So there wasn't any consistent data that weather is a contributing factor to experiencing homelessness. Um, but yes, and, and I don't want to take up all your-
Oh, thank you, Natalie. And then just really quickly, um, what I do have here is, um, there's, uh, different recommendations, uh, from Mr. Alley. He's took it upon himself to go ahead and draw these out, and he has found, um, areas within the city that are vacant that he suggested that these would be possibly used, uh, for, for combating, um, you know, the, the, the need for the homes. And, um, you know, just to, just to show a few, there's, there's starter, four hundred square foot tiny homes. He has it all detailed here, uh, townhouses, layouts, and, uh, again, he's got a huge heart to help our community and, um, you know, he's a, he's a very, very notable architect. I'm going to leave these with Natalie Green, and if anybody would like to take a look at them to get any ideas of, he does have a hotel-style, uh, floor plan that was very successful in San Francisco, and it's detailed in this as well. So I'm going to leave this with her, and I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
And I'll just add real quickly, um, one of the projects we are doing, um, we're actually partnering with Mr. Alley on the property on Nevada. So it's, um, a piece of property that the city had purchased, um, quite a while ago that's not being used, so we're working on the subdivision. So we'll take that piece of property, subdivide into six lots and then do some homeownership. We've also taken some of the NAP properties and have been able to subdivide, um, some of those. Um, we will likely be coming back as part of the housing plan with some recommendations, um, around infill and some of the fees for infill, because that, um, six lot subdivision, uh, if we weren't the city, we would have to incur probably about thirty to forty thousand dollars worth of fees just to, to get started. And so that could be a detriment to some development in the infill and the MRAs. Um, yeah, very similar to this, but long, um, I'll send you guys an email.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilor. My name is Cassandra Gondeta, former Mayor Pro Tem, and I'm here to speak to you on an urgent strategic need to expand La Casa's housing capacity through a hundred-plus-bed emergency and transitional housing facility. At this very moment, thirty women and children are being sheltered in hotels and twenty more remain on a waiting list, waiting for safety and stability. In addition, La Casa is now housing several senior citizens, a growing and often overlooked population experiencing homelessness due to the limited income displacement or the loss of family support. To meet those needs, we are proposing a comprehensive housing strategy, one that integrates emergency shelter, transitional housing, and supportive living options. Our plan includes a conversion of underutilized hotels into trauma-informed transitional housing and the expansion of our voucher program that provides flexible, immediate housing options for families survivors of domestic violence and seniors. In partnership with the county, La Casa also exploring the purchase of dedicated homes for seniors, which would allow us to serve at least eight additional seniors who are currently unhoused or at risk of homelessness. This smaller community-based setting offers stability, dignity, and access to essential services such as healthcare, case management, and social connection. The broader vision is a state-of-the-art hundred-plus-bed facility that operates with a continuum of care combining shelter, reparon services, behavioral health, and workforce development. This aligns directly with Dona Anna County Resilience Leaders Framework and advances our shared goals of ensuring every resident, child, parent, and senior have a safe place to live and thrive. We're asking for the city's continued partnership through planning, investment, and interagency collaboration to move this vision from strategy to action, to their, together we can end the cycle of crisis and create a stronger, more compassionate Las Cruces for all. Thank you for your leadership and for standing for those who need us most. Thank you.
I will just add, there's eight vacancies at Padreina, so, uh, they are taking, uh, applications for seniors, so we still have eight units left at Padreina, and then we'll be fully leased up.
Let me, uh, did Councilwoman Florida, were you, did you have something? Okay, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Just before we wrap this up, I wanted, one more request, and maybe you're already on it, Natalie, and the, uh, federal landscape team that we have at the city, but I was very concerned about the continuum of care funding. I feel like that's not really being talked about. Obviously, state legislators are addressing Medicaid and SNAP, but I fear this is not being talked about, so I, Natalie, if there's an analysis, we can then take and sit down with, um, Chairman Small around this. I think that's very important before the thirty day, so that it's honestly on their agenda, if you haven't done this already.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, that was exactly on our mind. In fact, Jen and I just had a conversation around continuum of care funding, so we'd love to have that meeting with Representative Small. Um, we are tracking, um, what's happening at the continuum of care. For, for those who aren't familiar, there's two continuum cares of New Mexico, there's the Albuquerque Continuum of Care, and then the Balance of State Continuum of Care. So the Balance of State covers, um, Las Cruces and then everywhere else in the state. Um, I will say I am the chair of the Balance of State Continuum of Care of both the executive board and the membership board, um, so we do track that fairly closely and will continue to, uh, communicate, um, that back and forth, so.
Thank you, Natalie. Uh, you wanted to speak as well?
Yeah.
Okay, come on up. State your name, please.
Hi, everybody. My name is Tony Watkins. I'm the Housing Director for La Casa Inc. And I just wanted to build upon the question about the continuum of care, because, um, we have, uh, about sixty-six percent of our voucher funding for rapid rehousing is continuum of care funding. Um, and so the concern about that going away would hit us very hard, so I just wanted to bring that back down to the local level. That's how, that's what it would look like for us. It's about forty-five vouchers. Um, and we don't have enough vouchers to serve the people coming out of our shelter, so we have a ninety-bed shelter, we have about seventy vouchers total, and when, and then when you combine the, the risk of losing those vouchers with the kind of arduous process of the coordinated entry system, you can see how people get hung up in that system or just not being able to serve. So we have a major capacity problem with that, as well as needing more hotel vouchers. And then I just wanted to thank you for the, for the conversation, you know? I think it's a great, great meeting of the minds, and I look for, I look forward to being a part of it in the future. And I'm looking forward to that survey, and especially as the gentleman said, bringing the voices of people with lived experience to bear on how we move forward, because they're going to see things that, that we don't see. So thank you.
And I'll just do a quick shout-out to Tens Torrance, who uplifts the voices of our unhoused in our community. Is that what you were going to say?
No, thank you. I did just want to say, even though, um, Mayor Pro Tem stepped away, uh, for our continuum of care funding, a lot of it is, um, is tied up in the coordinated entry grant that we have, rapid rehousing, and then permanent supportive housing. And some of what we've heard from, that's being proposed from the federal government, is to do away with permanent supportive housing, that they would cap it then at two years. And it's specifically funding that's set aside for people with disabilities. So it's terrifying, um, to think that people who have been on the streets a long time, because there is a chronicity number that they have to meet, how long they've been outside along with that disability, and it can often take longer than two years. This is also something that's been threatened to happen to our housing authority as well, so people being capped at two years. Don't like to be an alarmist, but it feels like alarming times hearing things like that. So those are some of the things that I'm really worried about. If we do get capped on our permanent supportive housing programs, then that means that after two years, we will start to see a lot of people going to the streets, and we will need to work with the council on then turning that funding into homeless prevention, so people will stay in their homes and we prevent their homelessness. Um, we'll relabel it however we need to, but that's what we'll be looking at at the state level and, uh, from our City of Las Cruces partners. I will say that, you know, um, uh, it, it is obviously worth exploring the needs of La Casa at this time too, because Community of Hope does absorb many of their clients, um, with a lot of our permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing funds, uh, which we're here to do. They are people experiencing homelessness, um, but to help them to, um, bolster their programs, we're, you know, again, also part of, happy to be part of that conversation.
All right, thank you. We'll move to the next item. You're asking to come and speak? Okay, come on up, before we get to the next one.
I was able to sneak away from work to be here for a few minutes. Don't tell them. Um, hi, Council. My name is William Gilman. I'm a local resident, um, small business owner, parent. Uh, I wanted to comment on the report. I came late, but I did, was able to read the report. Uh, and some of my noticings, like, I felt like there was not a lot of urgency in this report. Uh, it said, do nothing, we got it on lock, even though people here are saying all this funding's going away, there's no saying we should do X, Y, or Z about that or what possible options are, how we're going to stitch together funding from philanthropic foundations, from the state, from the county, et cetera. Um, it was also pretty light on data, like, in, one of its key findings was we should tell people more about what we're doing. Okay, well, this would have been a great opportunity, right? We had a couple of months to put this report together. Um, you know, so there's that. Uh, it also mentioned, like, Houston is a big success, and I was like, sweet, tell me more about that. And instead, I had to go research it myself. But one of the things they did is they set up their own continuum of care for the region. It's three counties. Uh, I think we probably need that here, uh, probably just for Dona Anna County, since we're like one-twentieth the size of Houston. Uh, and we need to seriously talk about where are we going to find this money? Like, money, also money isn't everything. Like, the report heavily focused on money, but if we're talking about dignity and housing and human whatever, uh, money isn't everything. And also, money is not always a cost if it's spent, right? We need to invest, and we need to seriously think about how we're going to invest, and yes, we want to be strategic, and I think there's some great suggestions, getting a hotel, running that as whatever, but I think we also need to think about having multiple tiers of overlapping interventions. Um, in Houston, the average wait time for housing placement is thirty-seven days. I assume it's significantly longer here. Um, so what are people doing for those thirty-seven days or sixty days or whatever days that we have here? I think it might be worth investing in somewhere for them to be that is quality, dignified, and safe until they can get placed into longer-term care. Um, yeah, that's kind of what I got. I was a little disappointed. Uh, also, like, if, if the message is like, we need more outreach, like, these programs have been running for years, whereas that outreach, we have this HMIS data that I assume is being submitted to the federal government for those HUD funds, like, why is that not available to the council now? Why is that not available to the community? Like, what are we doing? That's the other thing that, uh, Houston really did, is they, with that continuity of care, continuum of care that they built for their region, they have their own data system that makes it very easy to identify people's needs, placements, services, et cetera, put everything together. The city has already made some pretty cool investments in, like, the fire department, mobile integrated health, the light team. Mobile integrated health in particular is right in line with this, right? And so I think it's time to think about how are we going to invest, right? We don't say, oh, the fire department, money down the drain, bummer. We think of that as an investment in our community and our safety and our stability, and we need to really think about how are we going to do that and where else are we going to get matching funds for it? And I didn't see that in this report.
The only thing I'll add before we wrap up is we did explore looking at our own continuum of care. We don't recommend it because we would actually receive less funds than we're getting now. Um, and it'll also increase the workload, because you're essentially running a crazy application and data, and, um, the coalition does it much better than the city could do it. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chris for the next item.
All right, thanks, Natalie. Yeah, next is item two-point-two, an update on short-term rental requirements. Chris Faver.
Hello again, Council. Mayor, Chris Faver, Community Development Director, for the record. Okay, I have a short presentation here, um, on some new recommendations for short-term rentals within the City of Las Cruces. Uh, so in a nutshell, what is a short-term rental? Uh, basically, it's a dwelling unit that is being used or rented without the intention of becoming, uh, residency. Typically, you will find them available on third-party websites, Airbnb, VRBO, those types of sites. And this is not, uh, talking about hotels, motels, or bed and breakfasts. Uh, so the intent here really is to provide a mechanism to, um, track and ensure that these, uh, units are, are, are safe, whether it's through an inspection with fire or, or through, um, other means. But the purpose is to ensure safety, security, neighborhood integrity. Um, we are seeing growth in, uh, short-term rental activity across New Mexico, which Rochelle with Visit Las Cruces can speak to. Um, also trying to balance property rights with the neighborhood quality of life. Uh, we do frequently receive inquiries regarding, uh, potential or, or existing, um, rental properties within neighborhoods. Several municipalities and counties within, uh, New Mexico already have one. Um, Dona Anna County adopted their ordinance back in twenty-twenty. Uh, and this is kind of sort of the whole crux of the issue here. There's about four hundred and sixty-five properties listed on a third-party website, but only seventy-four have registered officially with Visit Las Cruces. So we're really hoping to balance that out, to increase the number that are registering that the city is aware of, and then ultimately, um, loop back into Visit Las Cruces's tracking software. So what we're looking to do here is to require, um, operators of short-term rentals to get a business registration through Community Development, similar to all other businesses that operate within the city. Additionally, they would be registering with Visit Las Cruces. There's software that they use to track, um, and so it would sort of be a two-part process, but having them, um, in, you know, have a business registration will sort of allow them to be, or, or require them to be in compliance with building and fire code. Um, there's also a, an insurance, um, responsibility as well. This does provide an opportunity, and this is a recommendation from staff, that they notify neighbors, we're recommending two-hundred feet, but, um, that is negotiable if, if council would like to extend that. Uh, also requiring that they provide a twenty-four-seven owner-operator contact information. Oftentimes, just getting in touch with somebody to determine who can solve a problem on-site is, is part of the issue. This would require that they provide that information, so it's always available. Um, providing off-street parking, um, again, getting back to the, um, the fire safety requirements, the smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, egress maps, those types of things to, to show people how, um, to safely exit the, the premises if needed be, and to make sure that they are file, following safety standards. Uh, there's also recommendations for occupancy limits, both the number of overnight guests and capping, um, uh, number of people for, say, a gathering. And, and again, a lot of these problems aren't things that we've seen in Las Cruces specifically, but, um, there are issues in communities where people do rent these out and have a large party, and that does become burdensome on the neighborhood. And again, just a reminder to those who operate short-term rentals that they do have to comply with all city, you know, relevant city ordinances, whether it's noise, whether it's making sure your trash cans are put back at the end of your trash collection day, which is an issue we deal with. trash collection day, which is an issue we deal with. Lots of different things. We can start to make sure that these owners are aware of the things that they need to be maintaining on their property. Taxes and fees. Again, they would be responsible for paying lodger's tax, any sort of state taxes, registering and paying that fee through the city, and then through Visit Las Cruces when they sign up through their short-term rental registration database. Just some other things that are not recommendations at this time, but that other communities have looked at, and maybe conversations for down the road. But some communities do put a cap on the number of short-term rentals per individual or corporation within a community. Some do put a number, a cap on the number that can exist within a certain area, or a total cap citywide. I know, for example, Santa Fe does have a few of these. They do cap the number of short-term rentals within the city, so that, you know, it's sort of a one-in-one-out type of a situation. So those aren't recommendations at this time. Those are just other things for council to consider, maybe down the road. As I said, Rochelle from Visit Las Cruces is here. She can speak if you guys have questions more to, you know, how prevalent the industry is in Las Cruces. Short-term rentals aren't a huge part of the tourist industry here in Las Cruces, but it is growing, and as you can see, quite a few were listed. So it's, I think it's time that we, you know, kind of get a handle on this before there's too many out there, and we sort of lose sight of how many are actually operating within the city limits. So next steps, I plan to bring an ordinance that outlines all these conditions by, in December, to have it adopted by the end of this calendar year. Make it effective January with enforcement beginning in July, and that again allows staff to sort of get everything in place, notify the public, sort of put all the materials together to work with the short-term rental operators, get with codes, and work out all those requirements, so we'd be ready to go by the summer of 2026. And that's my presentation.
All right, thank you, Chris. Counselor Flores.
Thank you. And thank you very much for the presentation. How were you able to gather this information? You did, did you do a survey, or just word of mouth?
Mayor, Counselor Flores, and Rochelle could speak a little bit more to this, but they do have tracking software that allows them to go out and track across all platforms. And so that's where they've compiled this information from.
So you want to have an ordinance that regulates that practice?
Mayor, Counselor Flores, what the ordinance would do would just require them to register as a business, and then also that would put them into the system with Visit Las Cruces, so both the city can track them from the business side of things, make sure that fire can conduct proper inspections, and then also that Visit Las Cruces can make sure that they're operating correctly, and also make sure that they're paying applicable lodger's tax, which they have to pay as well. So it's tracking for the city, tracking for Visit Las Cruces as well.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Corran.
Thank you, thank you so much for this. We were just exchanging emails, and someone seemed to have a sense of what the rules were before they even came into play. I was like, "Wait, we do have this 200?" I didn't even know about this. But I do have a couple of quick questions. I've heard that, I've heard, and I think this is related to the things that you chose to include and not include, that most of these are small operations, right? Like, these are not big swaths of places being bought up by corporations, because that's not what the market demands, right? I think, is...
Correct.
So that's why, that's why those last things aren't included there. They could be an issue in the future, but right now, this is really individual people, maybe they own one or two or three in the city, and are currently doing this as their side hustle, I would imagine.
Mayor, Counselor Corran, yeah, that's my understanding as well. I'm only aware of a few corporations that own multiple units.
So one of, I would have a couple of quick things that I would add. I would expand the required, their required to do the notification, correct?
Mayor, Counselor Corran, that is correct, yeah.
So I would, I would like to expand the notification radius to at least 300. I'm just thinking, you know, two houses down, three houses down, perhaps. I would like the radius to be a little bit bigger, because people are affected by this. And then I'm, I'm all for making this happen as soon as we possibly can, and thank you so much for working on it and thinking about it. My sense from people that are experiencing adverse outcomes as a result of short-term rentals in their neighborhood is that they're being rented out basically for parties. And those parties have, you know, hundreds of teenagers, say, at them. And that is the source of a number of police incidents, I think, that have occurred, and incidents of violence, certainly things like noise violations, but that's a little bit, that's not, I think folks have talked about this in the context of, like, shootings, fights breaking out into the street, et cetera. So I'm particularly interested in the occupancy limits, and then also the consequences of what this means for folks. So if someone has, if the police come to someone's house because they're having, they've rented out a space for a house party, and the police come, what is, or they're cited in some way, what is the sort of series of consequences that might occur? Are they allowed to continue? It really is, I think, one or two problematic folks who just do this all the time as their business model that the neighbors are really upset about. I would like there to be a model that's sort of educational, which sounds like the six-month implementation thing is really a powerful tool for that. But then I would also like there to be not that long of a, I'd rather folks experience the consequences pretty quickly, so that it's not like, "Oh, this is the fifth shooting at this house that we've had, maybe we should not let them have Airbnbs anymore." So I'm curious if you can talk about the follow-up for what that might look like.
Sure. Mayor, Counselor Corran, so we do have, and I'm just kind of looking at draft of the ordinance, I've been working with Legal on this, and the overnight requirements that we're recommending right now are two per bed, plus an additional two people per unit. So that kind of sets the occupancy within the house, within what, you know, you could have a reasonable number of bedrooms and beds and that type of thing. And then specific to gatherings, we put that no more than 10 additional persons above the allowed number of renters. And so we, you know, it's, again, those are recommendations. This is just a draft. If you wanted to increase that a little bit, you certainly could, but the idea was to sort of mitigate that potential problem, yeah. And then we're working with legal and codes to sort of deal with the enforcement component on that, and how, you know, how that would work, you know, if you cited one, cited twice, cited three times. So we're working all those requirements out right now. And I don't know if Brad... Probably not. But we can come back to that when we do first read or second read, yeah.
I would love to see sort of a hierarchy of impact, right? Like, if there's a shooting, that's more serious than, you know, someone not having their pool fence locked, right? Like, those, to me, are very different sort of scales of accountability that are happening with this. And I think I would just like to see that be included as part of that framework of accountability, if possible. So sort of what are the consequences, and do they match the impact on the neighborhood or the people around? So, please.
Mayor and Counselor Corran, yeah, we actually have it, you know, some of that already outlined, first offense, second offense, and at what point, you know, we would be revoking there. So as soon as we solidify all that, then we will definitely have that, and we can make that a component of the presentation when we bring the ordinance back, for sure.
Counselor Corran.
A similar kind of question, Chris. In terms of the notification process, then would a neighbor who disagreed with this plan, would they have any kind of recourse? And I know there's nothing that the city loves more than mitigating fights between neighbors, and especially you specifically, Chris Faber. But is it just a suggestion, or is there something tied to that?
Mayor, Counselor Corran, yeah, good question. No, it's just, just a notification right now, so they do have to notify. There's really nothing, unless council wants to take that step to prohibit that. Right now, it's just a notification that it does, that there is, you know, a short-term rental within, if we say, go to 500 feet or something like that. So it's just to put them on notice, yeah.
And it might include, would it include the 24-hour contact information? That would probably actually be very useful if that were a part of that communication.
Yes, Mayor, Counselor Corran, yeah, we're gonna require that they have all that information provided, not only to us, but to them when they do provide that outreach to their community, yes.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, thanks, Chris. Yeah, I think this is great. I'm surprised we don't have something like this already. So I think that feels really important, given the disparity between the number that exists and the number that are actually registered. Just a quick question. On the Airbnb side, do they, like, is there a way for the city to have Airbnb, before someone signs up their home with Airbnb, to say, "Hey, these are the, these, this locality's requirements for business license"?
I'll let Mayor Protem, I'll let Rochelle speak to that, because they deal directly with Airbnb on that. I don't know specifically.
Rochelle Miller Hernandez, for the record. Mayor, Counselor, Mayor Protem, Ben Como. Everything on Airbnb is very vague a lot of times, and they tell you to contact your local municipality, to be honest with you, even on the taxes. So to address your comment earlier that you were surprised we didn't have something, we did enforce the tax collection quite some time ago. But then, and sent out notices, and we do have some rules and regs on our website, but this is gonna be amazing. Thank you, Chris, for all your hard work on this. But even on the taxes, it says that they're collecting taxes and that they're being submitted to the municipalities, but they're not collecting lodger's tax. So they're talking about gross receipts. And so I went in, calculated, double-checked, and they state, when I contacted them, like, as if I was an Airbnb owner, that you were, they need to include those costs in their rental fees, and then submit them directly to us. At one time, Airbnb was collecting and submitting for the municipalities, and there are a couple agreements still out there, but they stopped doing that, because the numbers weren't adding up correctly, and there's causing a lot of problems.
So right now, the responsibility of that is on the owner of the...
Yes, just like the hotels have to report, the owners do, too. And they're subject to an audit?
Yeah.
If, if we see any discrepancy. The software that we use does data mining. It's really interesting, and it can predict if you are renting your unit based on activity. And then it would be up to you to show that you're not. If we're saying you're not paying your taxes, but it, we have the indication that you are renting your property.
Wow, interesting. So perhaps part of the education, if this should pass, Chris, should include some of this additional information as well. Might as well get that out there.
Sure.
And then I just had another question. It's not totally related, but somewhat, I just recently heard a legislator, and again, I haven't been able to follow up with her on this from where she got this data, but it was a legislator from Bernalillo County that was talking about, like, how much of a problem it is in Bernalillo County that so many single-family homes are owned by out-of-state corporations, like hundreds or something. I'm curious, in terms of like these 465, and you sort of said it, but I kind of want to touch back on it. You don't see that there's a pattern in Las Cruces for this?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, I can again let Rochelle speak to that. She probably has more access to that data. I haven't heard anything anecdotally, but I don't know if the data bears out that there is, you know, a tendency one way or the other.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, no. When we went through the list the other day, I can get the exact numbers for you, but there were very few that were owned by, most of them were just one owners, one property.
Interesting, yeah. And I guess I say that, right, like, in the midst of a housing crisis, there's a difference between someone local having a business versus a giant corporation just buying up houses to make profit.
Yes, I don't, I mean, my opinion, whatever that's worth, is I don't really think our short-term rentals are really affecting the housing crisis in our city.
It's worth a lot to me, your opinion, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, anyone else? All right, a couple of questions, Chris, on, like, when someone comes in and opens a business, they fill out the business registration application, and they have to have a tax ID number, state number. Is this the same thing? Are they gonna have to, is that gonna be required?
Yes, Mayor, we're gonna, you know, like, if you're a restaurant, you need to show us if you have a liquor license. Yes, so we're gonna require all that documentation, that specific information related to paying your taxes, the contact information, proof that you have reached out to your neighbors. We can work with them to provide them the list of people that fall within that radius, but then they have to come back and show to us that that is what they did provide. So we're gonna require all that before we actually issue that business registration.
Okay. The other one is notification to the public, or the neighborhood or residents. Isn't there already a practice in place for a zone change or a development that it reaches out to a certain area already?
Yes, Mayor, we, yeah, there is that notification process that's done through certified letter through the city. This would put the onus on the short-term rental operator versus the city taking it on. I suppose if we were finding sometime down the road that that wasn't happening, we could come back in and tighten those regulations up, but, but that would be the recommendation now, is that the operator does that outreach.
Okay. Yeah, the message we don't want to send is that we're not business-friendly, and we want to make sure that someone loses an opportunity to supplement their income. That's not what this is about. I agree with it, I believe in it for fire inspections, building inspections, so it's safe. It's safe for the neighborhood, and it's safe for the tenants as well that are, that are there, because I know sometimes a building official will get complaints after the fact that there was no hot water, or the AC unit didn't work, and where does that go? So this way, we hold them accountable and become responsible owners, so, yeah. Not limiting any potential income sources. We want to see people thrive, but definitely, we want, we want everybody to be safe. So thanks for bringing this forward.
Sure. Sure.
Public, is there anyone from the public? Thank you for that reminder.
Mayor, and the city council, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Pudma Waldovit, and I am the owner and qualifying broker of Rethink Real Estate. I'm here today because I've talked to Chris on the phone a number of times. For years, we have been trying to figure out a way to pay the 5% lodger's tax.
Could I get you to speak directly into the microphone, so they can pick it up as they record?
Yes, you bet.
Thank you.
So we are a real estate company that does property management, but we also do Airbnb management. So I have a number of questions and issues that we've been trying to work through as we try to become compliant with the ordinance that has actually been on the books for a number of years. I think 2020 is when the original request for us to pay lodger's tax was put into place. There is no functional way to do that. So our issue has been, and we have been asking the city, we check in with them maybe every six months for the last three or four years, because in order to charge that lodger's tax through, let's just take Airbnb, in order for them to do that, we have to have the business license, which we don't take issue with. In order to put into the system in an Airbnb, we have to have that number that corresponds with an actual account. So right now, you can't, we have no way of charging that tax and then paying the bill, because there is no, first of all, it's not mandatory with the city, so I don't know why people would add 5% arbitrarily to Airbnb bill when it's not mandatory that they do so, and that there's no functional way for them to actually do that. I did actually have somebody at the city tell me, just come in and write a check. Taxes don't work that way. So we can't just arbitrarily charge 5% onto our bookings and have Airbnb collect that, and then, then what happens to it? Right? So we did a pilot property where we have registered it with the city. We are waiting, and what we're doing is, we're collecting the taxes. We did one business license, and we're collecting the taxes. We still don't know how to pay them. So that money is accumulating on that one particular property. We vary from about 18 to about 25 properties at any given time that we're managing. In addition to that, we have asked, and we haven't been able to get an answer yet, to how does a property management company register all of the Airbnbs in their management system? Does every single one of those properties have to have a separate business license? Or do they, can the business license come from Rethink Real Estate, and then list all of the properties that we manage? Again, we don't have a problem with the tax being collected, and we don't have a problem paying a cost for each individual property, but property owners are not getting paid through Airbnb, our real estate company is. So how functionally does that work when the money is not coming in to the owner? That's a question we have asked of both the city and the county, and have not yet gotten an answer to. So I think that, in short, what I'm asking for is a clear path to be within compliance of this ordinance. Right now, we're not seeing that. We're not seeing it in the county, and we're not seeing it in the city. And I think that part of what everybody is missing is the voice that's on the other end of this, that doesn't have anything to do with the ordinances or making the properties safe. It just has to do with the logistics of how this happens. So I guess what I'm asking for is a voice when you're deciding these from the other direction. The other thing is that were this program where you charge lodger's tax of Airbnbs, if that were implemented, it's a huge amount of money for the city. Even if I estimate on the low side, it's somewhere around nine, eight to nine million dollars, which this city needs, so I am all for charging that. But please, I'm asking for you to do it in a way that makes sense in the real world, and for people who are, you know, when I started doing this, I was doing it for myself. It was in my backyard, so that was very easy. Over the years, it's built into a business. That business employs 10 people now. So there is another side of this. It's not only just a backyard person with one listing that they're doing. There's a whole business that is helping to support Los Cruces, and we just want the ordinances and how they're set up to make some common sense. Thank you. And I'm happy to answer questions as well. Turn it around.
No, thank you for that information. We'll definitely look into that, unless Rochelle, you have something to... Yes, please.
Mayor, councilors, just to address that quickly, we do have a system set up, so I'd be happy to sit down and explain it. We do have a page on our website. We've collected an FY25, we've collected $43,000 in taxes. We've already collected about $10,000 this year. I don't know where the 9 million is coming from, but, because we only collect a little under three for all the hotel rooms that we have in the city. Maybe if you rented every Airbnb every night of the year, but on average, the hotels only, a hotel room is only rented 50% of the time, and according to our calculations, Airbnbs are only maybe 25% of the time occupied. So I'm not quite sure where that number's coming from, but I'd be happy to look into it. But we do have a procedure, and I'd love to sit down and explain it to you afterwards. We can meet afterwards.
Okay, you'll talk to her offline? Thank you, Rochelle, thank you. Yes, sir, come on up.
Everybody, Tony Watkins from La Casa, coming back. Just real briefly, I used to work in the continuum of care agency that kind of runs the whole thing in New Mexico, New Mexico Coalition on Homelessness, and I've been with La Casa now about five months, but it's great to be, great to be part of a community that's really putting their heads together, and like, congratulations on the 800 units in the Pike. That's really exciting. My goodness. I just wanted to kind of connect these two issues on the agenda, because it strikes me, and it's really kind of out-of-the-box thinking, that did not come from me, but imagine linking the auxiliary dwelling unit initiative that you're facing now with the homelessness situation. And in the continuum of care, we used to get points from HUD for municipal governments that would give a preference to people experiencing homelessness in their Section 8 programs. And imagine if we did something like that in Los Cruces with auxiliary dwelling units, that we had somehow subsidized, or like found funding to encourage owners of auxiliary dwelling units to give preference to survivors of domestic violence. So I just wanted to put that on the table.
Is there anyone else?
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you all, thank you. Look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, Graham.
This is on the motion to adjourn the meeting. Counselor McClure?
Yes.
Counselor Matisse is absent. Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Kran?
Yes.
Counselor Flotis?
Yes.
Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.